Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, as far as staff presented changes, we need to remove item E3, the senior center funding request. They did not have our presentation able to come be with us this evening to make that request. And then we need to add item number 10 under new business, which is to consider a contract for engineering services for Knight Street. Those are the only changes we have this evening.
Counsel, you all good with that?
Uh huh.
Well, then I'll move on. I'll open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda, now's the time to step forward. Looks like we have a very full gallery tonight. Sir, please, when you come to the podium, give us your name and address before you get started.
Certainly. I'm Ron Cronister, 320 West Street. And I'll pass around, if you're willing, a copy of my comments. There are some information in there that you may want to have for notes. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to share this evening. I am Ron Cronister, and I'm here to speak on behalf of two groups of people in our community that are not here this evening. These groups are the persons in the insurance gap or are on Can Care waiver waitlist. They are not here because they have been forgotten and ignored for so long that they have given up hope that anyone in a capacity to help them will help them. I encourage you to change that this evening. Currently in Kansas, there are over 4,500 individuals on Can Care waiver waitlists. Can Care is the Kansas program administering federal Medicaid dollars. A Can Care waiver is one of seven conditions designated by the federal government that can receive services paid for by Can Care that do not require the recipient to fully qualify for Can Care. It requires that the governor stipulate how many individuals can receive this support each year, and that the legislator allocate the money to support these individuals. The designated number of allowed recipients and amount of budget support currently is so low in Kansas that the average wait time to get services once you are on the list is nine and a half years. At the same time, there are over 150,000 Kansans that are in the insurance gap. An adult in the insurance gap is in the insurance gap when their yearly earnings are too large to meet the requirements for Can Care, but they make too much money to qualify for private insurance or insurance from the marketplace. These are working adults. There are many reasons to support eliminating waitlists and expanding Can Care, but let me deal only with how this would affect Halsted and our residents this evening. There is no way to know exactly how many of our community are on waitlists or in the insurance gap because of privacy issues. I do know that Halsted has had individuals on the waitlist in the past. I also know that it is estimated that 692 individuals in Harvey County would qualify for health care coverage if Can Care were expanded. Halsted has 6.5% of the county population. That means that there are about 50 individuals, our friends, our neighbors, acquaintances, that do not have insurance. Besides doing the right thing to help these Kansans, what is in it for Halsted if we fix these problems? Number one, the financial burden of being on the waitlist falls to families and our communities. Families will have less money to spend in our businesses, community, and educational services have to increase. Number two, if Can Care is expanded, it is estimated that Halsted will see 15 new jobs, and our businesses and city coffers will receive $390,000 of new spending in taxes each year. Number three, Halsted will have a more stable workforce, as studies have shown that people with health care coverage are more consistent and reliable employees. Number four, Halsted residents with private or employee-provided insurance will see their premiums go down. Five, Halsted residents will know that the federal dollars that they do already pay each year for Can Care services will actually be coming back to Kansas. In the past 10 years, the Kansas Legislature has left over $6 billion of our tax money in Washington by refusing to expand Can Care. And Kansans can expect a savings of $70 million a year in our state budget. I am asking you today to stand with me and to sign this call to action. As with what happens most times when you do the right thing, it will cost you and the city nothing. And yet, the benefits can be monumental. The call to action reads, "We, the duly-elected members of the City Council for the City of Halsted, Kansas, are resolved that the government of Kansas is fiscally irresponsible for not expanding Can Care, is economically irresponsible for not expanding Can Care, is medically irresponsible for not expanding Medicare, is morally irresponsible for not expanding Can Care, is socially irresponsible for allowing a waitlist for Can Care waiver programs, is morally irresponsible for allowing a waitlist for Can Care waiver programs, is creating undue financial burdens on the families and our city by allowing a waitlist for Can Care waiver programs. Therefore, on behalf of our friends, neighbors, and all citizens of the biggest little city in Kansas, we, the undersigned, call upon Representative Stephen Owens, Senator Carolyn McGinn, and Governor Laura Kelly to increase the number served and the amount of Can Care support necessary to eliminate the Can Care waiver waitlist in the next few years, advocate for their constituents that are on Can Care waiver waitlist and in the insurance gap, support and vote in favor of legislation that expands Can Care to the full extent of federal law this legislative session. Who will sign?"
So, I just want to add to your comments.
Certainly.
In my own, in my personal life, I've seen the impacts of this, and I think this is a good thing for the state to consider at some point. I certainly wish that they would do more to address this issue. Ethan, would, I think from a past conversation, you know, we had mentioned some city had passed a resolution supporting Can Care expansion. Would it be possible to have something presented at our next meeting?
If there's a majority support from the council, yeah. I think Brad and I, between the two of us, could find a resolution that could come from the city as an entity.
Okay.
Thank you. That would be excellent.
Ron, thanks for coming in. Shawna, Josh, do you guys have any comments to add this evening?
Can I just have, I know, Ron, you've been advocating for this for quite some time. I was with you here in Halsted when Senator McGinn was here and Stephen Owens was here as well, Representative Owens. What's the pushback that you're getting in regards to not doing this?
We're getting a variety of reasons that we don't think are correct, and then that we're giving away free insurance. The state of Kansas is giving away free insurance, which in fact is not the case. Our federal government, our taxes are going to pay 90% of that. And if the state of Kansas pays the other 10%, that's the $70 million of benefits that will come back regardless of all the other things. But for the last few years, the main reason that this has not been able to clear the legislature is because the leadership of the Senate and the House and the committees that deal with this refuse to take up all of the bills that have been promoted. They simply are stonewalling it. And our representative and our senator tell us that they can't do anything about that. They don't serve on that committee. I believe they can. I believe they have great influence, both of them. They're well-respected. So that's why I'm calling the action, to ask this body to encourage them to stand for, support, and vote in favor of the Medicaid expansion bills that are currently before the House and the Senate, and then seriously address the Can Care waiver waitlist issue. Thank you for that.
As I understand it, there are 10 states that have yet to pass this, not the Can Care, but the Medicare issue.
That's correct.
I'm not sure it's in the best interest of Kansas to be in that 10.
I couldn't agree more. Everybody in our area, our surrounding neighbors have passed it. They are drawing our nurses away from us. I could take the whole evening, but I will not do that.
Well, and just looking at this in the same way that we look at other business in the city, it almost sounds like a 90-10 cost share grant, that if the state's willing to put up that 10%, we get the other 90% from the federal government. It seems like a win-win for the state of Kansas. So, Ron, we'll take your presentation as a council, and we will have you an absolute answer by the next council meeting, whether it be by resolution.
Thank you.
Something similar.
I will stay. If anybody cares to sign my call to action, I would be more than happy to pass that on to our representatives and governor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else here that would like to address the council in public forum? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, my name is Arneeta Howery, and I hadn't really come, I had come here to hear Ron's presentation because I've been involved, he and I have both been involved in this issue for some time, advocating. But since he, you know, has spoken, I have a couple of things that I could add. But I will, the reason I got up to talk is that I thought, well, goodness, as long as I'm here, I can let you all know that I am the new representative for the Silver-haired Legislature for Harvey County. I was appointed this past August, so I'm still kind of new to the whole thing, but I'm glad to be doing it. It's very interesting. The Silver-haired Legislature is a unicameral body that meets throughout the year to work on issues that are of interest to senior citizens, obviously. There are 125 representatives. Each of the counties has one representative, and then the large counties, Wyandotte Johnson, Shawnee, and Sedgwick have five additional, just because they're so much bigger in population. Our responsibility is to be in touch with seniors. I'm trying to get a little bit more on board with that, because all, all that I want mainly is to hear from senior citizens or people who know seniors, who might have an issue on their mind that they think is really important that's not being addressed well, especially if it's an issue that the state legislature could deal with. We just did meet as a representative body this past October, and we get to sit on the House floor and have our, and have our meeting. Very interesting. I enjoyed that a lot. There were resolutions passed that went to the legislature, and I'll see if I can find them here. Okay. And one of those, I'm not going to read them. Oh, I can just quickly read them, but see if you have any questions. But one of those was to support the expansion of Medicaid. That was a senior citizen issue, and the reasoning behind that is that in the, when the senior legislators did some research on this, they found that there are approximately 16,000 Kansans between the age of 60 and 65, so they don't qualify for Medicaid yet, Medicare yet, 16,000 Kansans in that senior group who fall in that Medicaid gap. So it is of interest to the senior folks, okay? And the other issues that were presented, these were just presented to the legislature the other day by Chuck Schmidt, who's one of our group, he's from Wichita. Another one is to expand the Grandparents as Caregivers Act. That was passed a couple of years ago, I believe. If grandparents take in a child from their family who otherwise would go to foster care, if it's a financial burden, they can apply for some financial assistance from the state. And what our group has decided on, the resolution says that we would like to make eligible other members of the families as well, if there's an aunt or an uncle or someone that would take in a child, that if it is financial, you know, burden for them, they can apply for funds. The next one, now please don't get really excited about this, the next one is to establish a medical cannabis advisory board. Now, that doesn't have anything to do with recreational use of marijuana. It is a study into the use of medical cannabis. A lot of other states find that to be legal. Ours does not. And it has proven to be a very great benefit for seniors and others in management of pain, seizures, and that sort of thing. So, yeah. And there was one submitted to eliminate the tax cliff to qualify for an exemption of social security benefits from state income. That's probably going to be taken care of, it looks like, in the tax bills that are floating around up in Topeka right now. In fact, even better, you know, the bills that have been submitted eliminate having to pay state income tax on social security altogether. And then voting rights. Seniors are very interested that the state legislature does not pass bills that would make it harder for seniors to vote, okay? Such as more restrictions on advanced mail ballots and those sorts of things. So, anyway, that's what we do. And so if you know of anyone who is a senior citizen and has issues that they're concerned about, and would like for the Silver-haired Legislature to address, you know, you can let me know. Our group, our district group meets about once a month in Wichita, and we will take those to be considered. And then the larger state group meets at least once or maybe twice during the summer to begin working on resolutions for the next round of legislature the next year. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in. I really enjoy the name of your group. I think I can meet the requirements almost.
Well, yeah, 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 you would. You want to take over when I?
I don't. I'm off on my plate now.
Yeah, you have to be 60 years or better, and live in Kansas, obviously, and you can, you can be a candidate to be elected. I was appointed because of the person who was serving found it necessary to resign because her husband had some severe health issues, and she felt like she needed to, you know, put her energy in that, in that direction. But, yeah, oh, I, I really enjoy studying issues and policies and discussing those and coming up with answers for them, so I'm enjoying that a great deal. And I need to do a really good job now of getting around to the senior centers in our, in our county and learning to know more folks so that, so that we can all be in touch and serve our senior citizens.
Well, thank you for doing that. And thank you for coming in tonight and explaining to us what you do.
Okay, well, I'm, it just.
And Ron thanks you for backing up his speech.
Yeah, I know. Ron and I have, you know, we've worked on this issue together, you know, in a number of ways, and we really enjoy it, but boy, is it important.
Can you state your address for me?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda? It looks like we have Mr. Alex Williams and Jennifer Linton here tonight. Who knows what they're up to?
All right, well, we are here to tell you. So, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for allowing us time, time to speak, and I know this is a public forum, so I want to be brief. But we want to, we want to be here tonight to express and make sure that you all are aware, and that the community is aware, that there's a really exciting conversation happening in this community, and I just wanted to brief you all on where we stand and at this point, and along, along with the community. So, my name's Alex Williams, 412 Main Street.
Everyone in town knows where you live.
That's right. That's right.
Jennifer Linton, 1417 Chestnut.
And we are here as representatives of the Community Steering Committee for USD 440. So these are volunteer, volunteer positions. But I just wanted to walk you through, the exciting conversation that's happening is about a bond issue, and, and we are part of that steering committee. But I first want to go back and just give you a very brief history of how this has come together and the strategic planning process, and then ultimately come up and at least make you aware of the draft recommendation that we have. So this started with USD 440 building teams, teams in each building doing an internal needs assessment. So that was three meetings at each school facility to, to look at a needs, a needs-based assessment of what the district needs today, tomorrow, and, and in the future. So all of those meetings were happening internally. Then, separate from that, Dr. Barry put together a Community Steering Committee, and that is 30 volunteers, I think a good cross-section of the community, and we started meeting twice a month, starting in October. So part of our charge was to establish our goals and objectives, along with what the building teams had already put together, and further develop those, put cost estimates to it, narrow priorities, because the sky's the limit on what that is, but to narrow those priorities, focus on those priorities, and make a draft recommendation. So we are currently also in the community engagement piece of this. Part of one of our first meetings is we had sent out, we, the steering committee, had sent out an all-staff survey internally, also a community-wide survey that got back nearly 300, just shy of 300 responses, which we felt like was, was an excellent response to that, and for the community to put their input as we weave this together and, and come up with a final recommendation. But that also includes a Halsted High School tour with questions and answers. Two of these meetings have happened in the last, in the last week, actually, and the also one at Halsted Middle School Saturday, and then on Wednesday evening, the same process will take place at the Bentley Primary School. So.
Can you pass this on?
Yeah. Let me see. So I think you'll see on the side, and I will just touch on each facility, you'll have that in front of you. If you don't already, we've got a hard copy, and then off to this, on the east side of the room. Each piece of this, and what those, what those dollars come to. So, goals and objectives, I say that, that's, that's just the history of what we've done so far, but the goals and objectives really are quite obvious but important. So build for the future, plan for smart growth, assure safety and security, which is a big piece of public education today. And we wanted big district opportunities for our students with a small district feel. So that's, I think, if you were, if you were going to give a theme, that's, that's what the outcome was, we were hoping that this, this outcome would, would bring about. Increase student participation in activities, maintain a good classroom size, and do what's best for the kids. So, walk you through this, and let's start with Bentley Primary School. Bentley and the Bentley facility, almost every square foot of that is, is being affected and improved, and certainly enhanced. There is some square footage addition there, just because they, it feels like, from all of our input, that it is fairly tight there. We've got kids meeting in, in hallways, in small groups, and this more than, than rectifies that problem, but also with some new, that's north, north is to your left on this particular one. There is some new addition, dedicated cafeteria, restroom, new kitchen that is very much undersized if you go on a tour, and then a secure entrance and administrative addition, which that frees up space for the existing footprint. There also is a change to the parking area and the pickup and drop-off. So the total cost that you can study in more detail later, and the public, we sure invite you to do that, would be 5.2 million in Bentley. Next up, Halsted Middle School, you'll see there, and if anyone ever has, if anyone has any questions in the public or otherwise, please reach out to us and the, or the district office as well. There are lots of volunteers that'd be happy to, to walk you through the details. You can see there. So the blue is renovated space, and the red is addition, but some of the highlights of that would be a new activity entrance, accessible restrooms and concessions, and that's on the west side, so north is to the top of the page. And that also would include kitchen and serving and existing cafeteria area at the middle school. Now, the biggest piece of the middle school portion of this will be on the high school on the next page. That total cost for the middle school is right at 4.2 million dollars, as recommended from the Standing Committee. Next up, Halsted High School, of course, a major piece of this, so just under, just over 14.9 million dollars, but some of the major things here that I want to point out to the public, that the steering committee and community have found as, as very important needs, would include, you can see the new addition, which is number two on your map, that would be the relocation of the, and new construction for the junior high, so seventh and eighth grade. That's where we're picking up the most square footage, so that in the middle school, four through what is now eighth grade, would, would free up significant space. But that would be located in between the middle school, where it currently is, and the high school, shooting off to the northeast, think in your mind of near the tennis courts. But we have middle school students who, on a daily basis, are going back and forth to the high school anyway, and so this seemed like a logical place to expand, freeing up some district existing footprint, and, and we think that will, that will be a great improvement. Also, a couple of other mentions would be number 10 and 11 on that. This includes a renovation and expanding the existing auditorium that, in my estimation, is well-needed, existing stage and performance support spaces, which is the, the back piece of that, new band and choir classrooms, because the expansion, as proposed, the expansion of the theater, the auditorium, the back piece of that would, would take the current band and choir classrooms. And so those would be built, the band classrooms would be built to the west of the existing of the high school. Another important thing that I just want to touch on, be mindful of your time, but renovate and existing the industrial arts and add metals. So that's number 15. That was something we heard loud and clear from the community, really, maybe not from everyone, but there was no opposition to that. That was as, the community was as adamant about that being part of this, of this proposal as, as maybe any part of it.
Currently, we have programs in Newton that our students go to welding that we can't get our kids into those programs because they don't have room. So this would be the opportunity to bring that to Halsted. That was a huge topic of conversation the last two, I was at the high school and the middle school this last week, and that, people are really advocating, advocating for that, so.
Are you aware of any other school our size that has something like that to offer?
No, and us being able to offer that would.
Set us apart from other schools.
Set us apart from them and be able to offer it to them, too.
Right.
So, Sedgwick. So Sedwick or Berdys could come to Halsted.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I love it. And I, I wasn't aware that other small schools were, but I'm all for doing things like that that are going to make us, you know, set us apart from other schools and continue for our school to be the best place for people to be, you know?
And give our kids opportunity to, to take in.
One other piece of that that may be interesting is that they would be, you see number fourteen there would improve, you know, we have tons of square footage for this, for, for this, and that's the commercial, or the culinary arts classroom, home economics in my day. But that, that would be, there's plenty of square footage, but it desperately needs, needs renovated. So that's, that's happening all over with this proposal and recommendation, but that's one specific that is, is quite obvious. So that total cost, 14.9 million, and there is an athletics piece of this, strictly athletics. And that would, the rec, part of our recommendation is to build a larger and more durable pressbox at the, at the football field and track facility where it currently exists. And it also includes in here, after much discussion, new softball and baseball fields. And that was really, I mean, that was agreed upon by, it, it took us a while to get there just because of the interesting dynamic that it has and also the relationship with the city. But what the school needs, in our estimation, and what the conclusion that we came to is the school district needs to, a varsity-level softball diamond, a varsity-level baseball diamond. And those needs are different than, certainly that's the, the council's, up to the council on, on what all the, what the community of Halsted needs from a, from a recreation piece of it. But this is what we feel like we need, and so that's, that's a part of it.
That's much different than sharing, like, say, a volleyball court or a basketball court. That's a common thing. But an eight-year-old really has no business playing on a baseball field meant for sixteen to eighteen-year-olds.
That's the conclusion.
So that may, I mean, that makes perfect sense.
So that would be the 3.9 million, the total. I realize these are significant dollars. And we don't, you know, it's not lost on me, the, the tax implications, but just, we feel like it's important, feel like it is, there's nothing more important. There are a lot of things that are important to a small community, but at the, at the very top, toward the very top are the, are your schools. And that really is where our future lies. It is, it's a huge piece, integral piece of the success, success of any community. And so we feel like this is an important piece to, to keep us at the top. So that total comes to 28.4 million. And then I will close, ask if you all have any questions. But I will just close by saying that the owner of a hundred thousand dollar home, what this recommendation would do, would increase that homeowner's monthly payment by fourteen dollars and seventeen cents per month. So a monthly increase of fourteen dollars and seventeen cents. With that, thank you all for your time. Jennifer, do you have anything, anything else?
Thank you guys for coming in. Obviously, in a town this size, rumors of something like this happening are everywhere. So it's nice to see exactly what the plan is, and to, to put pencil to paper and know what the number is that you guys are seeking. And, and I'm fortunate enough that I've gotten all my children through school. I'm now worried about grandchildren. And I believe, didn't the state pass a deal for open enrollment where it kind of opens you guys up? We're going to get to the point where we have to have something to attract students or we're going to start losing them. So I, I appreciate the, the battle that you're in right now, and, and wish you luck. Thanks for coming in and presenting the plan to us tonight.
I would like to just ask the council if you guys know of any meetings that we can go in front of, or any get-togethers to let us know, let Dr. Barry know, so that we can get out and talk to people and just educate them on what's happening.
Well, I, for one, as a city council member, but also as an employee and a community member, I appreciate the time that you all are putting into this, and for you being here today and getting that message out very clearly. I'm not a firm believer in, you know, raising people's taxes, but I do believe if you love something and you care about something, then you do have to invest into that to continue to foster the kind of community that you want. And growing up here, and I know you guys have grown up here, too, we have to, I mean, the communities around us are, are improving their facilities, and they're doing these types of things. And we have to continue to improve our facilities, our buildings, our infrastructure. And like, like your plan said, you know, not only for today, but, you know, we, we want to continue to be a place that people know is, is, is known for its excellence and the, the education that's provided, not just academically, but socially and emotionally and all of those things. And we want teachers to be able to come here and, and it be an amazing place and continue to be an amazing place. And so whether you have children, whether you've had children, if you're a community member of Halsted, this should be important to you. So I appreciate you taking time to do this. And I think the last thing that I will just say on this note is that this administration has, has taken us through this last bond really, really financially and fiscally responsible. And so I have no doubt that they would not do the same thing. So I just want to also, I guess, make that note. They, they were able to save tons of money on the last bond project that was approved, and I have no doubt that that's not in their mind as well. So I trust them 100% and know that they are leading us responsibly and in the right direction. So thank you so, so much.
Right. I'll just close with, that was, that was the Steering Committee's recommendation. It has been presented to USD 440's Board of Education to be voted on next month.
Just on a note, probably the, the biggest part of your presentation that I appreciate is the fact that you guys did take the time to set up the Steering Committee and the number of community volunteers that you put on it to do the research, and before you just willy-nilly threw a number out there. So I did appreciate. Yeah.
It represents everyone.
Yeah, the farmers, the business people, everyone in the community.
And so thanks for presenting that tonight. I'm sure there's a lot of people in the public that enjoyed that part of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else here wishing to address the council under public forum? Well, it looks like we can get the rest of our meeting started now, so I'll go ahead and close the public forum portion, and go on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Consent agenda stands as approved. We're going to move on to unfinished business. The first item is a distressed property at 126 East Third. You want to bring us up to date there, Ethan?
Uh, yeah, that's the Townsmen Motel property. We received confirmation today as far as written permission to access the property. So I will get that scheduled as far as the inspections we're wanting to do on it, to continue moving that forward, and let you all know when we're able to get those on the books. So I believe that's the only real change tonight to present, Brad, unless you have anything else on the Townsmen.
So we don't need any formal action on that at all? Okay.
I have a quick question in regards to that, I guess. And partially, it's, I think I'm new on, I'm kind of getting in the middle of this process. But when it comes to distressed properties, like how, I mean, is it normal for something just to, like, get strung out this long? And, or at what point can we be like?
Unfortunately, yes.
Because, I mean, I don't, how long have you all been dealing with this?
Since I got on. I've been on for, what, two years? We've been on just about two years. So there's, there's a lot of things that, I could, tell me, tell me, if I'm wrong, there's a lot of things that have gone into this one, and namely with the property owner, that have helped string it out some.
It's all situationally driven. In certain circumstances, if you have a house that is clearly dilapidated, falling down, and someone who can't possibly ever conceive of doing anything with it, you can finish a distressed property proceeding within sixty days. If you have one that has an owner who has some financial wherewithal, has dreams of what it can be, that it will never will be, in my opinion.
I think that very well put.
And wants to delay, they can do so, because your constitutional and statutory rights as a property owner are fairly sacred. And so what we have to do in those instances involves jumping through a number of hoops with them. And then you also get into other approaches to how we get rid of a piece of property without spending a phenomenal amount of the taxpayers' dollars.
Right.
So you get a significant number of pieces that go into it. But no, it's not always something that's going to take forever, but it's not unusual for one to take.
Are there not, like, are there some type of ordinance that are being, like, that your response, like, as a property owner, your expected X, Y, Z to maintain a property? And, right, or not?
No, that's correct. We have minimal standards with regard to various building codes. And those are all in place and up to date in Halsted. Again, depending upon what people do in response to that or not, distressed property proceedings tend to be kind of the last resort.
Well, obviously, I mean, I'm not here to, like, start taking people's homes, but, I mean.
If you look at it from the outside and haven't dealt with them before, it's not at all unusual to ask the question you're asking.
Well, and, I mean, I've lived here my whole life, and I'm pretty sure I've never seen that place be occupied, like, ever. And now it's, I'm, I'm, is it even safe to go in structurally?
Structurally, it probably is.
It can't be, I mean, good grief. There's, I mean, there's got to be things that are rotting and falling apart at this point.
Probably depends on your level of courage.
Yeah. And standard. Remember again that what we're dealing with is a minimum standards of occupancy. Does this one probably meet it at this point? That's conjecture on our part, because we've not been inside of it. You can't go in constitutionally without either a court order, administrative warrant, or some form of permission, which we now have. And, and that only came about because of the alternative ways that we're looking at disposing of this particular piece of property. In other instances.
The pushback that we're getting from this person is, I mean, can you share that or not?
He wanted to develop this property into various types of.
Twenty years ago, he did?
No, he hasn't owned it that long, but.
For the last fifteen years, and nothing's happened.
Well, right, okay. So, I mean, have we been, are we just being really nice, or would the legally, were, I mean, as?
I wouldn't call it being really nice.
Well, I think we had been for the first twelve years.
Yeah, I, that's probably true. Because there was always some plan or some thought.
I would, no, I would like to see the plans. Can you not ask for that?
We have. He's never presented one.
Well, then, I feel like it's like, if you don't do that, then is that not a legal out?
And we're, we're already on the way.
Sorry, I'm behind the ball, but.
The nice is over, yeah.
It is, and there's a time.
So where are we at now in regards to playing hardball with either, show us some architectural plans that you're going to do this, or are we past that?
We're past that.
Okay.
This is a different alternative.
We're waiting to do an asbestos inspection, and after we have that number, we can get a bid to tear it down.
And there's termites and whatnot, but it's going to fall down probably.
I don't know that we know about infestations.
Okay, wow.
But if you want to take that series of questions and make them even more complex, then just go ahead and walk over here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm here for it.
And you've got a hospital there that we're talking about taxpayers spending millions to take down. It's probably not something we want to take on.
Careful what you ask for. Okay, let's move on to the distressed property at 308 Chestnut.
Hopefully you all noticed that is the Hospital Inn property there, just north, or excuse me, south of the Fire EMS building. The, the property owner, through his property manager, they did put up temporary snow fencing along the Chestnut entrance, if you will, to block off access to the property, and have cordoned off the hallways on the other three sides of the building to denote people should not be in there, per the, the structural evaluation concerns. I believe they were supposed to present a plan this evening for remediation of the fourteen items in the report that you all received at a previous meeting. We have no plan, and I don't know, Brad, if there's been any communication from them on where that's coming.
Spoke with Mr. Schrog again today, and I think Mr. Rekis may be back from Israel. He was preparing, at that point, he made mention of memorandum in terms of, of the process, what they were going to do, but didn't offer to be in attendance this evening. And I didn't ask him necessarily, because that had previously been communicated, so.
Does that put him in any sort of contempt with our proceedings?
Yeah, basically, if, if you choose to just kind of strive ahead, then we can begin to go ahead with it from this point on. You had given certain deadlines, and they haven't necessarily been met. They haven't necessarily, they haven't been met, so.
Is the snow fencing, one of our reasons for asking for that to be put up was to keep people out. Is that sufficient to actually do that? I mean, when I think about snow fencing, you can just walk over.
Yeah, for our, and they can. But in, in terms of attractive nuisance or anything in the way of our regulatory environment, it puts people on, any reasonable person on notice. You know, it's there for a reason. If you crawl over it, you're doing so with some element of your own risk. So from our perspective, it's sufficient.
And he was the one responsible for putting the fence up?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they did do fairly, quick after they found out that we were going to do it. That we were called probably within twenty-four hours of disclosing that and said, can you hold off for, till the end of the week, and we'll make sure something's up? But they did comply with that.
Wasn't comfortable with what our price was going to be, I'm sure.
Well, since he hasn't met the deadline that we set, I, I would be in favor of moving on, keeping it rolling.
Yep. Whatever the next logical step is, that's what we need to do.
What is that?
Would that be a warrant?
We would need to get access to this property, being its commercial nature will have, we'd have the same inspection, need to ascertain asbestos mold, any environmental concerns to be able to have a, a firm demolition number.
And, and then we're out demolishing a building that they let get run down?
So initially, if the city chooses to take action before the property owner does, then that cost does fall to us. We can bill that to the property owner, whether or not the city actually sees that bill get paid before, there, there's just multiple ways where a property owner might still pay
You take someone to court and say, it's estimated this will cost X amount of dollars to demolish this building, and then take them to court prior to demolishing it for the fees?
You give them the opportunity to do so as part of this process. And the resolution we passed that's published indicates that you have until a certain date in which to get it accomplished, or to come before us and ask for additional time for good cause shown. And if those things do not occur, then anytime after that set date, it's established by the governing body, we reserve the right, it doesn't have to be the next day, it doesn't have to be three weeks from then, nor do we have to give any further notice. We just show up, mobilize, and take it down. At that point, the various costs are aggregated. We go ahead and, and demand payment from the owner. Ninety-eight percent of the time, we don't receive it. So then it's placed on the tax rolls again, as a lien against that property. Do we see it? Not very often. It's a loss leader, and it's something that you do in many instances, in most of these cities, in all the years I've done this, as a way of maintaining quality of life in your community. Because you're going to have these kinds of structures, and I'm just being candid. You could try, and then sometimes we do get it. In other instances, the property has enough value that some other developer or someone wants to buy it, and those monies can then go toward extinguishing the lien that we filed, but rarely does that occur. When it sells, it usually sells because taxes haven't been paid, and at a sheriff's sale, all those liens are wiped off. When it sells, it usually sells because taxes haven't been paid, and at a sheriff's sale, all those liens are wiped off. So it's a, it kind of a, uh, best way I can put it, becomes a cost of doing business in a community.
And our.
And my, this, this person has a whole bunch of money, right?
I mean, there's no way we can know that.
Right, I mean, we're already saying he's some kind of, I mean, I don't know who he is, he obviously doesn't live here.
At one point, had the means to acquire, you know, the hospital property, these two properties, various other properties. But I don't know that we, yeah, to council member Homewood's point, know exactly what his overall financial status is.
Maybe I'm being just naive right now, but, like, if I don't pay my mortgage, right, and I, the bank seizes it and what, I'm, I, as, at what point does your property not get seized, or you're not responsible for letting something?
These aren't private secured interests that would come after him like the bank. These, the only place right now where he's had significant, um, pushback are the taxes owed, when they were owed, and how delinquent they were. Um, at the point where judgment was rendered, and he could have potentially been at risk of losing the property based upon sheriff's sale, he paid it. And he has the ability to do that. I mean, anyone, I say ability, has legal right to do that. And so that's what he does, and these properties, as far as I know, he didn't know anything against them. Um, but, again, that's just what I know of them at this point, because there are no other mortgages filed to record.
So there's no, like, lawsuit saying this is a hardship for our community, like, to sue someone on a hard, like, you're, this is causing our community, like, hardship, and you're responsible. So you either take care of it by either renovating it or demolishing it.
Yep, and that's what we're in the process. That is exactly what we're doing. And then at the point where he does not pay, we file the lien against the real estate which encumbers it. He doesn't pay that, and we go down this road.
And we've been doing this for two years.
Not on this property.
This one.
This one's new, yeah.
Your, your frustration is well received, because I think we're all in the same boat.
It's fine. I agree. What, what did you just, what did they call me earlier? Anyways, they called me a name before this meeting started, but I'm not the most patient person, so.
Okay.
For sharing the details.
So, any formal action on three oh eight Chestnut?
Okay.
No, I think you've given instructions, so just move ahead.
So we'll move on to distressed property at two seventeen Main. What can you tell us on that one, Ethan?
Uh, that I will turn over to the city attorney, because that, uh, we were directed to seek the administrative warrant for access.
And I filed that. I'm just waiting for signature, which we should have shortly, and then we can have access.
We still have zero response from the owner?
Absolutely nothing.
Correct. Counsel, any more questions regarding that property? So we'll move on to the distressed property at six oh three Spruce.
Uh, you have the email? Yeah, let me pull that up. Um, for the last, the property owners, um, had come forth, there were some questions originally, um, about ownership of the property. Once that was established firmly, uh, who the responsible party could be, they came, uh, at that last meeting in December and asked, uh, to come forward, um, or be allowed to try and rehabilitate the property. Um, if you've been by there, there has been a lot of vegetation work done, um, removing it, and there is, um, per their representation, uh, with the weather, uh, they didn't, uh, couldn't be here this evening, but, uh, the electricity, um, at the property has been upgraded, uh, with a licensed electrician that was permitted through the city. Um, there's also been temporary patch and repairs to the roof, and there's going to be a more permanent plan. Um, it, so the big thing I asked, uh, because this communication came to Brad myself, is that they plan to present, um, hopefully at our next council meeting with that firm plan of, this is the timeline for the repairs on that. Um, but they have taken some immediate steps, if you will, on the property, um, as weather has allowed. Um, obviously, we've had some winter weather, but I will say it was very noticeable as far as the, the vegetation cleanup around the property, if you've been by six oh three Spruce, uh, compared to what it was two months ago.
Well, we have some action. That's good.
That's awesome. So, yeah, if the council would be amenable, we would recommend, um, we would bring that back, uh, next meeting, or at least the next meeting where the property owner could present to you all their formal plan for rehabilitation on that residential property. I'm okay with that.
Are they all good on that?
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Charlie, good. Donna, you good? Okay, so you don't need formal action for that, though, do you? So we'll move on to the distressed property at five twenty-two Locust.
And that, uh, had a conversation just at the end of the previous week. Uh, the property owner indicated they were going and removing personal property, um, over the weekend and through this week, and scheduled to meet with me on Thursday, uh, to discuss, uh, the next steps they might be planning with that property, so.
That's the trailer house, right?
Yep, that's the, the mobile home there, um, and, and Locust, so, uh, again, we would set that to be on the agenda again in two weeks, or I can present, uh, based on what the property owner tells me Thursday, uh, assuming they keep the meeting, so.
Okay, sounds good.
But we are at the point with five twenty-two Locust where the city can actually take, uh, like, they've gone past the deadline, so to take action.
Yeah, in two weeks, we should pursue that if.
Well, what's been the situation? We're just like, they keep asking for more time and more time and more time?
Um, sometimes if they need time to put a plan together, in this case, um, this one's been moving fairly, uh, the end of their sixty-day window, uh, which historically is what the council's given when they pass that resolution saying the property is distressed, and you either need to rehabilitate it and present a plan, or have it removed from the property within sixty days. Um, that was set for this evening, uh, as far, or set, actually, that, the timeline expired on the twenty-first yesterday. So, um, they did reach out and, and like I said, I'm not exactly sure on what the plan is. Um, but meeting with the property owner should let me know whether they're planning to remove that or they're, um, interested in some of the other methods we talked about to bring that property into compliance. But the mobile home needs to go one way or another. It's, it's, um, it's pre-HUD stipulations. You wouldn't be able to pick up that and move it to.
We've asked them to either remove it or surrender it to the city, and then we'll remove it.
We haven't asked them to do that by a specific time.
Yeah, we've, we've done.
By the twenty-first.
Not succeeded.
Yeah.
Yesterday.
When were they asked, when were they given the twenty-first as a?
Sixty days prior to that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. I'm just trying to answer your question.
Yeah.
Don't get mad at me, I just got here.
I'm just trying to be clear and concise, so you know, it was sixty days.
I'm hearing you, I'm just making sure before I make my next comment that it's worthy. So they've been given plenty of time, is basically all I'm saying. I'm not trying to beat me.
Yeah.
So we'll hear about that one next meeting, based on your conversation.
Yep.
Sounds good. Any other questions regarding that property, counsel?
Your conversation is gonna be, like, you either have a plan or we're taking your property, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that'll happen Thursday.
Yeah.
Supposed to.
Supposed to happen Thursday, so if we don't have the meeting, I, I'm judging from my own, I think there's a pretty clear consensus that we'll start calling companies that specialize in moving that type of property.
Okay, that finishes up our unfinished business. Now it's time for new business. The first item is a funding request for the Halsted High School Digital Media Production Class. Looks like we have some representation, and we'll find out who drew the short straw momentarily, and please give us your name as you speak.
Good evening. My name is Alexia Wilcox. I am part of Halsted High School's Digital Media Production Class. Pending approval from our school board at the February meeting, we would like to travel to Kansas City, Missouri in April for the National High School Journalism Convention. Our digital media advisors, Kelly Zier and Aurora Farmer, attended the Fall Convention in Boston, Massachusetts. Aurora Farmer was the speaker for a session at the convention with her J E A mentee group. Both advisors attended several works, workshop sessions that piqued their interest and are helping improve their classroom. We as students can also attend the conventions and go to the workshop sessions to learn more about journalism and compete in contests to have the chance to be awarded national recognition. Teachers from across the state and the nation also attend the convention with their students in hopes of finding new creative ways to work with journalism in their classroom. Our state association is K S P A, which stands for Kansas Scholastic Press Association. They put on events during the year for journalism students and are also a part of the national convention. Kelly Zier is on the K S P A board. She said K S P A is creating a special session at the Kansas City Convention for advisors and students to attend to celebrate the fifty years of journalism in the state of Kansas. The registration fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars per person, and we are seeking up to one thousand five hundred dollars, which would cover the total cost of registration for a class of ten students and two advisors. Thank you for your time and consideration in supporting our digital media production class.
Has this request been made to the school board?
No, we will be doing that on February twelfth at our school board meeting.
So if you're turned down here, you're gonna go to the board and ask them?
Yeah, well, our board, we're going to the board for approval to actually go, um, because it is in Missouri, so it's technically in a different state.
So if we, if we did seven fifty and the school board would match it, you would have the fifteen hundred you would need, or?
Correct. Yes, for the registration fees.
Is that something that you're anticipating the board's gonna say yes to, you think?
So, yeah, um, they, um, they are planning, or when Mrs. Farmer and myself, I'm Kelly Zier, um, when we went to Boston, they helped cover the fees for that. They also covered our airfare, food, and everything. Um, so in hopes of this one being nearby, um, the registration fees and then the hotels and food would be part of, uh, what we're expecting to have to fundraise, and then hoping that they will be also be able to contribute something to that as well. So, but with the number of students as opposed to just two advisors going.
I'll take advantage of it when you can.
Kelly, the digital media class, um, do you guys, are you in charge of facilitating the media presentations that get broadcast for sporting events, like football games, basketball games? The Rupp Tournament just got, um, broadcast. Do your, um, digital media production groups help with that? Are, are you part of that? Do you have visions of doing any, any kind of expansions with that?
So our expansion of the journalism program includes, um, Twenty-First Century Journalism, which is an introduction to the journalism world, um, the ethics and everything behind journalism and how all that works. Um, it includes our video media production classes, which are the live streaming, um, the kids creating different video content for social media, um, for different events at school.
Right.
Um, and then the yearbook is our massive production, and that's where all of our funds go. Uh, we use sales from ad sales, and we use, um, yearbook sales themselves to fund the yearbook. Um, and so that's something that, I came from a school district that the school covered all of that. Um, and so I wasn't used to having to fundraise that on the part of the kids.
Right.
And so that's their responsibility.
Um, well, I would just say that I feel like that in of itself has been really a blessing to our community that you offer that service for athletic events. Um, I don't know if they have a vision of ever doing that for musical events or things like that, but it might be something to consider, um, if we were, you can't because of music rights, right? Yeah, you're right.
It also allows them an opportunity to compete. We compete at the regional level. Um, these kids hadn't been to a state contest in years until last year, and so we took them and they competed at state contests as well. Um, placed very high with many kids, and then nationally, um, the only way the kids can compete is if they're there. Um, and so that's another way that they can be nationally recognized for the things that they're doing, um, by going to the national conventions.
Kelly, if your request is granted, you will come back and tell us what happened?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, presentation, share with the contests, some things they compete in.
I believe I can make that a requirement, Charlie. You should. Mr. Mayor? Counsel, any other questions?
I thought you had one.
Yeah, I kind of cut you off, I think, protein.
May have, I don't, I don't know what it was now. I didn't write it down.
I'm, I'm sorry.
It's, it's fine. Not the first time it's happened. It's okay.
These distressed properties have made you a little aggressive. Josh, do you have anything?
No.
Well, the motion is for, yeah.
Motion's for.
Annual.
As I read it. It's gonna be a one-time donation, or are you guys looking for an ongoing annual donation?
This is for this year's convention. They do, they have annual conventions.
I'm not seeing it.
But, yeah.
British on the language.
It looks like a one-time.
Generally, for most of these school things, we're, we're in the five hundred to a thousand almost all the time. So, I mean, if we go up to fifteen hundred, you know, you're setting that precedent. That's my only thought, to be fair.
When is this event?
It's true.
It's not a lot of time to fundraise. It's kind of harder to fundraise when it's negative six outside.
April fourth and, third, fourth, and fifth. It's a Thursday through Saturday.
I know, Josh has a good point there.
I'd be good with a thousand.
Yeah, I don't want to take away too much of their incentive to fundraise, so I'm good with that.
It's Mr. Mayor making a motion to approve an annual donation to the Halsted High School Digital Media Production Class for an amount not to exceed a thousand dollars.
We have a motion in a second to, uh, donate a thousand dollars to the Halsted High School Digital Media Production Class. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, you will re, be required to come back to the council and give us a report. And, uh, if you, if you come up a few hundred short by the time you get all your fundraising done, let us know.
Thank you guys so much. We appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in this evening.
When you start fundraising, give me a holler. How about you donate to this?
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is a Halsted Historical Society funding request. Everybody's hitting us this evening. I believe Jolene's here for that.
I am, I am. Four oh three Santa Fe. She's not here. Um, I'm Jolene Ross, the president of the Historical Society here in Halsted. But you might know me as a city employee. I'm the, the director of the Halsted Public Library. And thank you for giving me this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Reimer, and the council members. On behalf of the Halsted Historical Society members, I'd like to express our gratitude for the utility waivers that the governing body has issued the last couple of years. We really appreciated those waivers. The Historical Society members are the caretakers of a nineteen seventeen Santa Fe Depot Museum that is on the National Register of Historic Places. Taking care of a hundred and seven-year-old building and grounds is a daunting task. Four oh three Santa Fe. We recently received a dragon grant from you all, and that grant money, uh, will help with a multitude of repairs, including painting of all of our cargo doors. I think we have eight cargo doors on the building. We are on, um, line with the contractors to start work on the outside of the building in the summer this year. And we are extremely grateful for the dragon grant. As I understand it, the funding going forward will be five thousand dollars to be used where it is most needed. Our list of wants and repairs are numerous, and the board is ever mindful of being good stewards of any funding and donations we receive. Our expenses for twenty twenty-three for our utilities, including the, the wave city bill, were nine thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. Building insurance on our building was four thousand three hundred dollars. Lawn mowing, maintenance, and other expenses brings a grand total of expenses for the depot for just running the depot, thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Our income from events, membership, donations, et cetera, were eight thousand dollars. There's a big difference there. The board members are raising funds and searching for grants to landscape the depot grounds with a garden and a walking path to showcase the historic bridge. with a garden and a walking path to showcase the historic bridge lamp posts that were purchased at auction. These improvements will enhance the city of Hallstead and those driving in town from the north. All that being said, the Hallstead Historical Society members respectfully ask that the governing body of the city of Hallstead support our endeavors with a five thousand dollar allocation for twenty twenty-four. You have questions? Has everybody been in the depot?
I have.
Been a few years, but I've been in there too.
Okay, yeah.
I very appreciate the work that you're doing, keeping our, our history in front of us. It's, that's good, it's a good thing to do.
I think it's Hallstead's. What?
I don't think.
Some stuff, they did, uh, some displays.
Able to hold events there?
We can.
How many people?
Um, you know, I don't know what our number is, I don't know, um.
I just wondered, you know, people are often looking for places to have small gatherings or do, you know, could we market it in that way? I lived in Manhattan, um, for a long time, and they had an old train depot.
Mm-hmm.
And they kind of did it like an event center, and it was kinda cool because it was historical, you know? And so it was, it wasn't like parties, it was like fancy parties.
I don't know if there's that much room in there.
There's not much room.
Yeah, but if you did an indoor-outdoor thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
We've done events before, um. We have a, um, ice cream social usually in the summer and a potluck dinner. We've had the Community Foundation, they've done things there before. Um, but if you have the whole building, if the whole building is open, we have quite a few rooms that have space in them. But you wanna do it a certain time of the year.
Right.
As we don't heat the whole building.
Right.
Yeah.
If there's no other discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the annual donation to the Hallstead Historical Society for an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for the annual donation to the Hallstead Historical Society. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thanks, Jolene, good to see you.
Well, thank you so much for that, and I would also like to invite all of you. We're having our annual meeting in February. Um, we're meeting at the Paris Center on February thirteenth, and you're all invited, and we serve soup, and it's all free, and you can find out exactly what we're doing. Uh, watch Facebook or Flyers, that's coming up. Um, and also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we're always looking for volunteers and board members quiet back there to help out with, with the depot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a neighbor's store funding request. Is somebody here representing neighbors out?
Megan Evans, I'm with the Neighbor's Store, Tensider Drive. Um, I wanna thank the, the council and the city for, um, wavering. I guess that's, I don't know if that's a word, wavering, um, the utility costs for the Neighbor's Store over the past few years. Uh, we really appreciate that. As you know, the Neighbor's Pantry, um, spends a lot of money trying to help people just get through their, their, uh, days, months, weeks, and year. Um, this past year, we had well over a hundred families that were serviced through utility payments or, um, um, through Evergy or things like that. So, um, our letter said that, uh, this year, instead of doing a waiver, that you're, um, more interested in just doing it as a grant. And so I would request a five thousand dollar grant to go to the Neighbor's Pantry to pay for their utilities. And I will say that anything that's over what our costs are would go to, uh, help the community. So, it's not gonna be money wasted, it's just going to be used, probably coming back to the city for the city bills, for the most part. So, do you have any questions for me? I want to be short and.
I'm, I'm just wanna say how appreciative I am that, that there's a group like you in town that is here just to help the, the vulnerable in our community.
Oh, thank you.
That's incredibly important, and you guys are doing good work, so thank you.
Well, Monday is the day that the pantry itself is open. And so I don't know how many of you are out and about between, uh, one o'clock and five o'clock. Jolene, I need to invite you to come down there and see, um, people coming in and out. Uh, we do have a person who spends a lot of time just sitting and visiting with folks and trying to help them figure out how to make the most out of their payments, things like that. So, um, we try to be wise in the money that we use and that we have to give out. So, we appreciate anything that we can get. So, any questions?
Nope, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for asking me.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve the annual donation to the Neighbor's Pantry for an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the Neighbor's Store, uh, annual funding of five thousand dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Next, I'll open a public hearing for active tax abatement review. I don't see any representation from the company that currently has a tax abatement with us, so Ethan can probably bring us up to par, and then we'll close that public forum and move on.
Yeah, um, city council previously passed ordinance number twelve fifty-eight, uh, which is related to a tax abatement for Martin Machine and Welding. Uh, was related specifically to their powder coat extension. Um, the city has the right to abate taxes, uh, for economic development purposes, such as expansion of local industry under Article eleven, section thirteen of the Kansas Constitution, and then, um, certain other state laws. Uh, at the time when the abatement would have been passed, uh, the council does require a cost-benefit analysis of that project indicating that there's a positive return on any abatement. Um, on that, it was found to be in good standing. Uh, for those of you who are new, we did include the city's, uh, economic tax development policy, uh, in there just for reference. But in this case, uh, we do require annual review of those abatements to make sure that they are meeting, uh, both in terms of the, um, job creation and, uh, other indications of that. Uh, you see the report in there of, uh, Martin Machine Welding. Did see a decline of about seven employees, uh, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, uh, but they are projecting they'll be back up, uh, to that twenty twenty-two number by the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, the, uh, that number is higher than their original abatement year. Um, they still show, um, just under two point nine million in payroll. Um, and they in, project that they will see payroll increases around seven percent. Um, they also, uh, estimate currently eleven percent of their employees live, uh, in Hallstead directly. Again, one of the large benefits of having primary employers in our community is the rolling effect of dollars. Uh, you know, they're either living in town, spending money at local restaurants, et cetera. That's one of the, uh, things that's considered under that cost-benefit analysis. Um, I will point out, uh, as we do every year, that, uh, while we're saying tax exemption, it does not apply to a hundred percent of like the Martin Machine properties. Uh, it's very specific to those, uh, capital projects that they apply for, and there is a formal process, uh, they go through and applying for that. Um, so all that to be said is Martin Machine has been consistently in our top five highest taxpayers, uh, as long as I've been with the city. So, again, just a little, um, when people hear tax abatement, sometimes I think they believe all taxes are getting waived for these companies, uh, they are not. It is specific to certain projects. Uh, this one is in year nine, I believe, of a ten-year abatement. So, um, this will either be the last or the second-to-last year, um, if it was granted to continue, so. Uh, other than that.
I was gonna say, for you new members, we don't have to put all these magic numbers together. The Harvey County EDC Economic Development Committee usually does that for us. And they research it and give us what this cost-benefit analysis needs to equal out to. And a lot of people ask about, well, who qualifies for abatement? By the time you get through all the regulations and the state statutes, it basically boils down to manufacturing. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah.
Pretty close.
Go ahead, Ethan, I didn't wanna steal your thunder.
Oh, no, that was, um, cool, counsel, I didn't write it down, so. Yeah, that being said of, uh, we do believe that Martin Machine would still be, um, in compliance with the original, um, parameters set forth when they applied for a tax abatement and would recommend as staff that it be allowed to continue for the twenty twenty-four year.
So we'll need formal action on that, counsel, if these get reviewed annually, so.
I have a motion to approve continuation of tax abatement as established in ordinance twelve fifty-eight for Martin Machine Welding for twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to continue the tax abatement for Martin Machine and Welding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You guys. Next item up, public works equipment purchase. Well, I think we're gonna get Pat to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Uh, what we are asking for tonight is for the purchase of a, uh, F-five-fifty, uh, basically a dump truck, um, with the snowplow on it. Uh, we've been looking for a truck like this for quite a while, um, to allow us, you know, to pull our heavy trailer for our skid steer, uh, and or the mini excavator, so when we're out, uh, we can, uh, when we're digging and having to remove dirt, we'll have something we can load into a lot easier than going into back of a dump truck, 'cause you normally with your, unless you're using tobacco or something, uh, you wind up having to use another loader to get up into the bigger dump trucks. Uh, this also would be a very nice vehicle for when we're out picking up tree limbs. Um, and the, the smaller stuff where guys are just picking up by hand, they can throw it onto this truck and then be able to go out and dump without having to try and drag them out of the back of our utility boxes or service boxes. Uh, like I say, we have been looking for a truck for quite a while. Um, we came across this company, uh, that with this one. Uh, we did find a couple others, uh, or several others, and they're really close in price. Um, like I say, the one we found up in Kansas City was a little more. We found one in Colorado for a little less, but neither of those had snow plows on them, and this one that we found does.
This is a brand-new truck, Pat?
Yes, yeah, I think it's got about twelve hundred miles on it or something like that, he said. I think it, I think on the listing it shows four hundred, but said they took it to a show, and so it's got a little more miles on it right now. But yes, it's a brand-new truck with the warranties and everything.
Gas or diesel?
Gas.
That's my question.
Is it actually red?
Yes.
Sedgwick red, Heston red.
I know.
I don't know.
Might be a deal bird.
Well, if, if, if that's, they did, they did, I did say that was sort of one hiccup, but, uh, they did suggest that we could take it over to West Street and have a wrap, white wrap put on it, if you really wanted to change the color. That's all, like, he said, like, about three thousand or something like that, I don't know what that would cost, but I didn't really figure it was really necessary, but.
Yeah.
So.
Would we u- would we use the snowplow?
Yeah.
What do we use now?
Uh, the one on our dump truck?
Just the dump.
And then basically if we need to.
So, could we potentially use both?
Oh, yeah.
More people out?
Yeah. Uh, what I have, we do have another plow, I'm getting ready to go, I think I'm gonna look at buying them out. 'Cause I, like I say, we had a dump truck, uh, one ton set up, and we had a snowplow on it, and it was a, uh, the same plow style. This is a V-plow that we're getting with this truck. And it's really nice when we're using the big trucks or equipment, um, pulling everything, wind drilling it up, that the pickups with the V-plows, they're okay going out and opening up some streets, but they're really not quite big enough, but they are really great at going in and keeping intersections open while the big trucks are doing their thing. 'Cause you can go in, open up an intersection, a driveway, real easy with that V-plow, and it's small, maneuverable. It's really nice to have that option. And then if you do have an ice storm or snowstorm, it does come in handy sometimes knocking tree limbs off the street, hurry.
Yeah.
Did that in oh-five.
Yeah, fortunately, we don't have to move snow that often, but.
No, but it's, yeah, it's nice to have it when it's available.
I can see where it'd be nice to have a truck this size, it kinda is that medium tier between one of our grasshoppers with a blade on it versus the big dump truck.
How much can we get off that old truck, you think?
Oh, um, I really imagine that truck will probably go for, you know, two, three thousand, I think.
Oh, it's.
I mean, it's, it's just, yeah, it's just a Chevy half-ton. It's all, one of the, it's one of the oldest PD truck I've got left.
That was the truck that used to be your truck is the one you're getting rid of?
Oh, yeah, well, actually, all the half-tons have been my truck, but, except one. I didn't get that one, that went somewhere else. But, yeah, I've been rotating through those.
Well, I think, when we plan for this, I don't have a problem with it.
If there's no other discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to appro- approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-three Ford F-five-fifty chassis with dump body and Boss V snowplow for an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand nine hundred dollars for master tech truck and equipment and authorization for staff signatures on any necessary documents relating to purchase.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for an F-five-fifty dump truck with a snowplow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Let us know when it comes in, Pat, I guess we'll see it since it's so bright red.
Yeah, it, yep, and I'll let them know tomorrow. I don't know how long it'll take us to get it, but it's sitting in Wichita, so.
Wow.
They'll have to change the, right now it's got a straight plow on it.
Question.
Mm-hmm.
Can that street sweeper dump into it?
Oh, yeah.
Good move.
But it can go into our bigger trucks, too. We did, we've already tested that out.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good.
So, it, it, that street sweeper does have enough lift to get into our big dump truck, so.
All right.
We thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Next item on the agenda is Safe Routes to School, Priority One Improvements Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel in the packet, uh, was the Transportation Alternatives Project, um, agreement between the city of Hallstead and the Kansas Department of Transportation and Secretary of Transportation. Uh, we're seeking a motion for the mayor to be approved to sign that agreement. Um, it was provided to the city attorney. For any comment, um, as I noted, I don't know that we have a lot or could make a lot of changes to it. It's kind of a boilerplate agreement. Um, it's surprisingly, we kind of, uh, as we're looking at hopefully going out to bid in the next three to six months on this project, uh, realized that we'd never, ever signed that formal agreement, so they sent that to us, and as the mayor's signature is required, we need to have authorization for him to do that.
Is there some way we can let the public know what this project involves?
Yeah, I.
I mean, I know it's, it lists it on, I am twenty on the draft, but.
Yeah, um, so it.
I don't know if we're really doing something of value this district, this district, you know.
I think we have a maze.
Yeah, I think we actually had.
This is great.
Had some plans at one time that were put out on the city's Facebook.
Long time ago.
Yeah.
We can refresh that, though.
But, yeah, we plan to refresh, and we're actually working with Lochner now. Um, we actually just got the.
Now, the journalism class was just here.
Final preset, missed opportunity. So, but, yeah, we're, we're waiting until we get that firm, firm bid letting date, and then we hope to have a lot more publicity about what's coming and, and anticipate, 'cause there also is gonna be interruption, uh, that, that people need to be prepared for as far as.
Understood.
We're going in and.
They will recognize the benefit.
Yep.
I guess if there's no other discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the agreement for the Transportation Alternatives Project Safe Route to School Priority One Improvements between the city of Hallstead and the Kansas Department of Transportation and Secretary of Transportation and authorization for the mayor to sign documents and execute documents on behalf of the city.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the SRS, uh, Priority One Improvement Agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, thank you, counsel. Next item on our agenda is the CED two-point-oh grant, memorandum of understanding. Ethan can let you know what that's about.
Thank you, uh, this is a grant, uh, that we got and applied for in collaboration with the cities of North Newton and, uh, Sedgwick, because under the Department of Commerce Grant Program, they only do one award per county. Uh, so as we did with the first round of CED grant, we thought it was better to, um, see benefit in multiple projects as opposed to all of us just competing. Uh, overall, the city of Hallstead will receive, uh, eleven thousand, uh, six hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-four cents in grant funds. Uh, this MOU, uh, North Newton is serving as the primary applicant, so we will basically be a sub-grant recipient and report information to them. Uh, that is what the MOU is covering, just our responsibilities to get them information as they request, uh, keep related documentation, um, should they need it. And then, uh, overall, as far as the project we're looking at, it is to fund wayfinding signage. We actually had the first meeting, uh, with the contractor, uh, that we hope to be using for that. Uh, it was pretty good, and we look forward to seeing, uh, what. It was pretty good, and we look forward to seeing what they bring back in terms of concept. But I think they kind of understand what we're looking for in wayfinding signage and making it something that's gonna stand out and, and help people navigate our community, but also serve as marketing for our community, just like the Marquee did, so.
When, when are we? We just have to get a bid back, and we're gonna get this done this year?
Yeah, it, unless there's some unforeseen delay, we would have to have the entire project done by the end of the fiscal year at the absolute latest.
Anybody else have anything? All motion to approve memorandum of understanding between City Holstead, City of Sedgwick, City of North Newton for C2.0 Grant and Authorization for City Manager to Sign Documents, Execute Documents with each entity on behalf of City Holstead.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this MOU regarding the C2.0 Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, Council. Next item under new business is Battery Energy Storage System Zoning Regulation Amendment Referral. Say that five times real fast.
So we've been approached by Concurrent, who leased the land in the industrial park, approximately 11 acres there on the inside of the curve of Industrial Road to seek formal changes in the city's zoning regulations to allow battery energy storage system or BESS operations in our I-2 industrial zone. Currently, it is not listed as an allowed use, but it's also not listed as a disallowed use, meaning it would come under regulations in either some sort of special use permit. They are seeking it to be in allowed use, which gives them a little more comfort as far as long-term prospects that, you know, the rules suddenly couldn't be changed from a zoning perspective. They had some suggested language that they sent, which is kind of the motion that was in the packet. I don't know if Brad, upon further review, has a different way to, to, or that he would advise you all to maybe make the motion to refer. But essentially, this is a, this motion tonight would be a formal ask of the city council for the Planning Commission to take this up. The Planning Commission would take this up by scheduling a public hearing on the matter, here weighing, you know, information as presented in the public hearing. And then essentially, their process at some point, when they feel ready, they would make a motion to bring it back to you all and say, this is our recommendation as your planning commission to take, you know, action, be it to allow it, allow it with certain modifications, or potentially, they might come back after their public hearing and say, we don't think you should change it too at it. So all those are possibilities. That's kind of their process in the planning and zoning world and how that interplay works. So right now, you all are just asking them to take action, which puts a little bit of expediency and formality in that they need to take it up and discuss it at a meeting, so. I don't know, Brad, do you have any?
No, and as we discussed the other day, I mean, there's elements of this that, in, in the way it's been done, that I have questions about still. However, there's nothing wrong with allowing it to go to planning and zoning for initial input and recommendations. We can also subsequently make additional comment and ask them for specific findings as needed. So I think it's okay to begin this way. Still not completely confident with the way that's gonna work out, so. Some of the things they're asking for. So we're just passing this on to?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just asked him, like, what kind of things have they been asked?
There, there's, the way that this has been done, and I know Pat Hughes really well, and he, I've worked with him in a number of other settings. Because this is such a new technology, there are a number of things in here and what ifs that we don't necessarily have adequate knowledge about yet. And so leaving ourselves some wiggle room is probably a good idea, but yet they're gonna want us to be fairly constrained so that they have the ability to continue to have unfettered use of that property during the term that they use it for purposes intended. It's a balancing act, and, and I'm not, the way they're proposing it, I guess I want to really have some thorough discussion before that gets passed by this body.
Sounds like a start.
All motion to approve governing body to initiate, submit to the Planning Commission a request to consider making amendments to zoning regulations, City Holstead concerning battery energy storage systems.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to refer this matter to the planning and zoning on battery energy storage systems. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. Next item on our agenda is consideration of an engineering contract, and this is for some street work.
Yeah, it was a handout this evening. Apologize that if you didn't get that on the formal agenda, but be a contract with us and Certified Engineering Design, which is Mr. Fouracre, whom a lot of you have, have seen on other city projects. We're looking at Ninth Street specifically from Spruce to Chestnut. Doesn't include the, the main and, main and Ninth Street intersection. But basically, this would be rehabilitation and construction of, between Chestnut and Main Street on Ninth, which is currently an asphalt road that is in dire need of rehab. And then also conversion of the existing unpaved road between, or that Ninth Street is between Main and Spruce into a paved surface. You have the, the engineering surveying, the actual plan design, which is estimated to be approximately $44,000 in engineering cost. And then $28,604, and that is related to the construction phase, which is where Hartland and his team come in and make sure any improvements are being built to the plans that they make. So altogether, engineering on the project is, would be just shy of $73,000 under the contract, and that's fairly in line with the amount of work we'd be doing in a rehab.
So tough question. Why is this more important than Walnut?
I don't know that it's more important.
That's what I'm gonna be asked, or that's what I have been asked.
Slated sooner.
How many blocks is this?
Two. But it does eliminate one that's never been paved and fixes a bad paved section. I bet that section that's paved now, it is horrible over there, but Walnut, where are you talking about?
Just the, like, the, the.
Yeah.
Dirt road between, what, what is it, Fourth and Fifth or Third and Fourth? Just got massive craters. I get questions about that all the time.
Well, this would technically be the first block that was unpaved that we're actually paving, and it does tie it to. The intersection that we just did.
Yeah, no, I.
We just did an intersection and it's trash already?
No.
No.
Oh.
No, we.
Gotta tie into the one.
Oh, the one you just did, I got you, sorry.
I'd say that it kind of came, or I guess stayed originally. The city had tried to look at addressing all of Ninth Street as part of the Ninth and Walnut project and extending. And just due to the other capital projects we had, we, we scaled that back and how much work the Ninth and Walnut specific area needed. So this stayed on the radar and was kind of, the consensus was as far as the work session when we asked for projects, yeah. There's definite, though, I mean, other needs, and, and as we know, we, we continue to tackle these as we can.
Well, we've, we've upped the budget on, on that this year, I think, so.
I would say there's not a particular reason other than it was already something we had in the works.
Yeah.
My suggestion's always gonna be if you're getting public pressure on a certain section of street, I mean, we can put that with the rest of the comments while we're prioritizing that schedule.
Yeah, that's why I bring it up.
Mark, make a note of what section of the street.
How many blocks is it on Walnut?
It's probably three blocks, two or three blocks, yeah.
Yeah.
But the, yeah, they're all pretty bad. There's that one that's paved, and then there's one that's not on each side.
You're talking, is that North of Sixth, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
300 block of Walnut's paved, and then, say, it's, I mean, we have the exact opposite problem on Spruce, actually. Like, or on Pine, excuse me. Pine is all paved, except for the 300 block of Pine is still unpaved. And that historically goes back to kind of the, the rolling policy, which was property owners having to vote specials onto themselves, and that's always a pretty big ask for people in, in historical areas of town, but.
It's like Seventh Street from Main to wherever.
Yeah.
Dirt. But nobody had, I, I can't recall there's any residents facing Seventh Street.
Yeah.
Either. A lot of those sides, because.
There might be that one small house.
So his, my house doesn't face it. I know kids still walk in the mud to get to school, but.
And this will be interesting for us, kind of as, as a case to even see what we run into in the conversion of a, of an unpaved to a paved, because we've never, everything we've built has basically been brand-new street, you know, or we've converted an existing paved section to, to a new style of pavement or touched it up, you know, like a milling overlay.
Are we plant, we're planting on concrete, I'm, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we'll ask for it as, as an alternative like we always do, and then let you guys decide based on what those prices come in at.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the contract for engineering services between the City of Holstead and Certified Engineering Design and authorize the mayor to sign? Mayor to sign here.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this engineering contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Awesome. Already signed it, by the way, so I'm glad you passed it. We do have one executive session on our agenda this evening, and I would entertain the motion for that now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Holstead City Council recess into executive session to discuss job performance of a city employee and maintain privacy rights pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, except in KSA 754319B1, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are in executive session. We'll move to the back council room. Oppose, same sign. We are in executive session. We'll move to the back council room.
Okay.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll go ahead and move on. And the next section of our agenda is the report section. I'll start with governing body comments tonight. Tonight, I'll start with you, Brody.
Um, just want to say thank you to everyone who came in and, and spoke to us during the public forum tonight. It was, uh, it was good seeing so many people passionate about the various issues and I really appreciate it.
Charlie?
I'll echo that. Some great things done to, here this evening.
John?
I'm grateful to the city and the workers who are out in the cold elements, making sure our streets were manageable. And continuing to keep those roads open for our people going to and from on a daily basis. So thank you to those, uh, people who don't tend to get enough recognition, so.
I agree. Uh, City Crews did do a great job from what I noticed driving around on the streets. And I'm, I'm usually out there checking out on that stuff just to, so I can defend or, or, you know, comments that I get sometimes from the public and never heard any negative comments on snow removal this last storm. So kudos to Pat and his group for that. Having all the participation tonight at public forum and the council meeting, as well as getting to see the, uh, potential bond issue for the school was very interesting and it made for a little longer than normal meeting. But it was all worthwhile information to take in, so. With that, I'll move on to Ethan for a city manager report. And when you get that done, Ethan, you can move on into your year-end financial.
As far as the management report, uh, spent the last couple of weeks working on several grant projects, uh, in terms of gathering information, filing, uh, necessary status update reports and then meeting with contractors. Uh, we have colors picked out now and, and the steel building ordered for our spec building project. Uh, you all passed some of the agreement tonight for our safer routes to school project. And then we're already, uh, working on the beginning stages of the North Street project, so. Um, that's taken a lot of time. Uh, we also, uh, talked to our contractor on the wastewater treatment plant study. And they anticipate they should have that draft report to us all, um, to be presented by the end of February. So hopefully you all would then see, uh, a final version of that in March. And we can begin to discuss next, next steps there concerning, uh, the wastewater treatment plant and its future. Uh, we did have our site visitors, uh, from the auditors, uh, were here through last week. Uh, they actually rolled out, uh, mid-afternoon Thursday. Um, so just kudos to Julie and her team for helping them get the information they need. Uh, they wrapped up sooner than they thought and they hope to have, uh, our financial audit, uh, ready to go by the end of March twenty twenty four, depending on some state reports they were waiting on. Um, if you all might notice on your city emails, uh, starting to send the legislative updates from LKM. There's links to a YouTube video where the league staff kind of run down issues. Um, then they have the various things you can, uh, read about as far as legislation that impacts cities potentially. Uh, just know things are gearing up as we're entering this session and, uh, apologies if, if you don't really find those interesting, but, uh, you're gonna keep getting them from me. Um, and then just wanted to cover one last thing, uh, that I shared with you all previously after the event. But, uh, winter storm Jerry, uh, was the name of the winter storm over the holiday weekend. We did see daily prices for natural gas go up to just shy of thirty dollars during that time. Uh, I am pleased to report that we avoided the price volatility that was in those daily markets though, because of our participation in the Wood River project with KMGA. And the stretch of our winter supply going to mostly fixed pricing. Um, so natural gas is going to, uh, you know, follow some supply and demand rules. When there's demand, uh, we will continue, uh, just to let residents know, um, you know, push out conservation before. And that's more due to the overall demand in the system. Um, and there also is, when we buy those fixed base price deals, uh, we pre-buy. Or, or, you know, put that quantity of gas out there as well. So if we use more than what's under that fix, then it does force us into daily. So that's one of the reasons we just ask for conservation. Um, but we tried to be very strategic and look at, you know, historical data, um, on that. But thankfully, uh, both in terms of the overall pricing seen, um, but to our customers especially. Coming through winter storm Jerry was significantly different from winter storm Yuri. And a lot of that's lessons learned, um, changes in the natural gas industry as well, following winter storm Yuri. So I know sometimes it probably, um, alarms residents when they see us call for that conservation. But again, we're just doing that to do our part to try and lessen demand, um, on a, on a nationally used commodity during, during a time of crisis, so. Man, that is all I have as far as the manager's report, unless there's any specific questions on anything else. As far as preliminary year-end financial, uh, you have the month-end handouts there. And then the treasurer's reports, uh, were in the packet as well that you've already approved. We've soft closed our financial, um, year and reconciled that. And then we are just awaiting on our final findings from the auditors to formally close out our twenty twenty-three fiscal year. At this time, we do not anticipate any major adjustments or changes based on our conversations with the auditors, uh, following their field visits. Um, please note that the information we are presenting are unaudited numbers, so there might be changes, uh, if the auditors do advise of any adjustments that are needed. Across all budgeted funds, uh, which is that budget fund summary report, um, those are our budgeted funds for the city. We met all of our revenue projections are within two percent of what we projected. Property tax revenues did come in slightly unfavorable to our budget expectations. And that's most likely due to delayed payments or potential delinquency. Um, but the overall effect on any tax fund was negligible. All budgeted funds were able to meet the city's financial goals and policy of keeping their overall expenditures to ninety percent or less of their requested budget authority for the year, uh, especially if you factor in the corresponding reimbursements. Four funds finished twenty twenty-three unfavorable to their anticipated year-end balance. Uh, two of those being tax funds, which came under their projected balances by or about the same number as the unrealized property tax revenue. Again, this overall, um, is negligible in terms of its effect to the city's year-end financial position. As the largest amount that we were unfavorable was less than five thousand dollars, uh, from that projected year-end balance. City's other funds and notably the general fund, the water fund and the gas fund all exceeded their estimates for year-end balances. And the city, uh, overall was favorable to the budget across all funds by just over, uh, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Specific to city departments, only the police and the golf course ended unfavorable to their projected expenditures. Although, uh, both of these departments were expected to have those overruns due, uh, in part to the off-cycle wage adjustments that were authorized for, uh, by the governing body for the police department. And then Wedgewood continued to see greater play volume, uh, and therefore saw both corresponding expenditure increases and revenue increases, um, from their original budget projections. Revenue in the general fund was largely bolstered by higher than projected sales tax revenue, overall interest income for the city, and the strong golf course revenues. There were some areas of concern such as the continued decline in franchise fee revenue related to cable TV and landline phone service. Um, and EMS revenue from build fees, excuse me, was also unfavorable to budget for the second year in a row. Um, but I will note that none of those are considered pressing problems to our overall financial position. Um, or specifically to that of the general fund or its operation. Likewise, the city's utilities all ended the year showing signs of continued health. And with expense to revenue ratios hovering in the seventy to eighty percent range at the close of the fiscal year. Gas fund was the sole utility to end the year in a cash position that was unfavorable to their previous fiscal year. And this is attributable to the accelerated loan payments on the state utility loan that the city is making. All anticipated inter-fund transfers were able to be completed for twenty twenty-three fiscal year as budgeted. And overall, no city fund appears to have violated their budget authority or cash basis statutes during the year. Overall, for the fourth quarter, we saw our overall cash position citywide drop by just over one million dollars, uh, which is related to large capital project payments being.